Hey, welcome to the video meeting that we get to have. We're really glad that you're joining us and a couple of caveats on this thing is hey, as a multi-site church, this really is one of the only ways we can really communicate to everybody across campuses, across Iowa. So, we're delighted to do this. We're going to try to keep doing it better and better and make it work. So Pastor John, Pastor Chris, Pastor Jesse, and we are here to really, it's kind of a one item meeting, but we're obviously open to other questions too. On your screen is the text number, so if you want to text a question in or a comment in, that will come right to Jesse's computer, so he'll be able to kind of do those live. Also, you can email PLC@PrairieLakesChurch.org. And if you're watching on your computer, on the side, there's a tab that says Submit a Question, and you hit that and type a question, that will also come to Jesse. So, we are delighted to be able to do this. So, thanks for joining us. Hey, we've had a busy night, all of us. You rolled in from a board meeting, you rolled in from a board meeting, I rolled in from a meeting with some guys. George Wessels in the room for the kind of the financial side. So, why don't we pray first, and then we'll just go. So, Father, thanks that we can do this and we can meet, and we're really grateful for the technology and the fact that we can do this across Iowa. So, thanks and guide our time this evening. In Jesus's name, amen. All right, so we're here to discuss the acquisition of property. So, technically, Chris, for us to acquire property according to our constitution, that's got to be a vote by the church. So, here's kind of the deal. We have a vote coming up. It's been in the bulletin, according to all the bylaws, and this is our place to kind of give you information and discuss it. This church in Cedar Rapids, Edgewood Church, it's been on the radar for us for, has it been a year and a half?
About that.
About a year and a half. And, you know, it's one of those things-
We may have people from Edgewood watching.
Yeah, hey, welcome, Edgewood people, and anybody from Cedar Rapids, welcome. While this has been happening, it's been a kind of a long process for us. So, we've talked about it in church on several occasions. We've invited people from Cedar Rapids to email or contact us if you're interested. We had a gathering there, a pizza gathering there to meet just kind of prospective people that are interested. So, we've been kind of going down this trail for a while, and a lot of it lately at least was contingent upon the folks at Edgewood Community Church actually having to have a vote. So, we had to be a little bit careful what we were doing or saying until we got to that. So, here are kind of the details. Edgewood Community Church in Cedar Rapids voted in April to gift their property to Prairie Lakes Church. They approached us a year and a half ago, and just they were praying, they were thinking it's a church that's been on mission for a long time, and they're kind of seeing the end of their days, not for lack of heart, but really for lack of people and kind of young energy, and they've been godly in this whole thing. So, they've been seeking God's will for what they want to do as their numbers dwindle and they're struggling to kind of keep things going. And they've prayed and they've sought the Lord, and they had multiple options, and one of those options was, hey, would Prairie Lakes like the property? Would we become a campus of Prairie Lakes Church? So, that was, as you can imagine, a long process, and we are really, we went over there multiple times, we've been over there, different ones of us. And they ended up in April voting to say, we want to gift our property to Prairie Lakes. And wow, we, you know, kind of from our perspective, we'd like to say to them, well, that's a beautiful gutsy, faith-filled mission for them to be on. We've seen the other side of that where we've, when we started this multi-site thing, we thought, man, there's all kinds of churches that are empty in communities, and we can maybe, you know, re-green one for the kingdom, and man, it's held pretty tight. But these folks at Edgewood, they really have done this. So, they voted, and that was theirs first to do, and then that kind of came to our table, the elders and facilities and finance and prayer table, to say, what do we want to do? And so, that leads us to this moment. So, Chris, give us a little bit of context on this.
Yeah, and really, what makes some of this work is the fact that we're a converged church. They're a converged church. We're part of this network of churches, and their hope is that, you know, there's a chance to use this facility for ministry, and that it could continue on for a season with the converge length that we have. Because they did look at some other churches in Cedar Rapids, and just felt more comfortable working with Prairie Lakes. So, you're right, it did come to our finance team, and with George's wise counsel, we needed to ask some tough questions. What's at stake? We needed to learn a little bit more about the property before we take on something that's going to really tax us financially. Are there any risks to this property? So, we've gotten attorneys involved, and we've done our due diligence to make sure that it's, you know, it's free and clear, that we understand the money behind it, we understand the legal stuff, and we paid for a very thorough inspection of the building. And there are some issues there, there's some deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed. So, we wanted to get all of those questions answered beforehand. I think we had clarity on all of that, brought it to the elders. Elders really feel like, even though five years ago Cedar Rapids wasn't on your radar, there is an opportunity for us.
It's been one of our questions.
There's an opportunity here, particularly on the west side of the river, for a church like Prairie Lakes. It seems to be pretty low risk, particularly since they're coming to us with a building. And we've just learned how incredibly valuable it is to have 24/7 access. Now, we didn't understand that when we launched Waterloo, we didn't understand that when we launched Osage. We were starting to understand it by the time we got to Grinnell, but wow. This is a gift if we're going to try to do a site in Cedar Rapids to have kind of a ready-made facility.
And just to piggyback on that real quick, when we first started this multi-site journey, our view was, we don't want owned property everywhere, we'll deal with that, and we can, cheap rental place is going to be great, man, we'll be found, that's just not true. And a church that sets up and tears down every weekend, that we don't have 24/7 access is a detriment to ministry. It really is. And we took the leap in Fort Dodge to buy that church, and we paid, what, $420 or $420 for that? And we're like, oh, man, we don't know. We're looking now going, I mean, we'd give our left arm for that in every community we're in and more. So, this really, in that vein, we're looking at this going, wow, this is a pretty good thing.
It does, it feels, now, the value, according to the city webpage, the property, it's about five acres of property, valued at $900,000 or something like that. Now, it's never been contested, and it's, you know, it's not a taxable property, so who knows? But the improvements or the value of the building on the land is another $400,000 or something. That gives us reason to think, wow, if we ever had to borrow against this for some improvements, if we had to liquidate or sell the property, the risk is pretty low. And that's not our intention, our intention is to try to launch a church there, but we understand that even though the gift comes to us with some expense, there's still a mortgage, $240,000 that the church owes because of some remodeling they did 15 years ago, and they've just been faithfully paying that off, but there's still some debt on the building. And we would inherit that, not only do we inherit the land and the building, we'd inherit the debt. But we would also inherit a little bit of savings that they're building up, because there is a congregation, and they're paying their bills, they're paying their mortgage and some staff and their utilities and some missions work. So, you know, Fort Dodge, we started with a building. Here, we start with potentially a building plus a small congregation of 20 people. And we've learned a lot about those folks in the last four or five weeks. We've had Prairie Lakes couples down there visiting every week and kind of learning, and you know, it feels like this could be a pretty doable transition.
One thing you guys had both mentioned, I think, today as we were talking about it as a staff was, this process hasn't been us pushing into Cedar Rapids as much as Cedar Rapids kind of pushing into us and us kind of just prayerfully kind of considering. So, there really hasn't been any sort of pressing on our part about this.
Right, yeah, and I think for me, you know, we all see the both and say, wow, we're not meeting our budget, and you know, we've got four campuses, five campuses, and four of them are almost sustainable, but not quite, and you know, so we've got all those, so why are we doing taking on another one? And I'm, I mean, that's been my fear this whole time. So, for me, it was like, man, we kind of did this, instead of this at first, we did this. We didn't fight for it, we didn't go, oh, this would be great, we kind of went, oh, boy, we don't know. And man, it just kept happening, it just kept coming, it just kept coming, it just kept coming. And it was one of those things, we said, okay, God, and our elders put their due diligence and not only the facilities and finance team doing their, all their hard work, but the prayer from the elders and the discernment of the elders, and this is where we are today. So, that's where we're at. So, just some other notes, and let me, and we've got some pictures of the property that we'll just kind of roll those up if they haven't been going already, but Matt will kind of get those going. Here's some things that, the potential for us, like, wow, this is, you know, potential. Cedar Rapids represents our second highest online viewing audience. So, we've got a pretty significant online viewing audience every weekend, households, unique households, pretty significant. And outside of the Cedar Valley, Cedar Rapids is our second highest viewing, so that tells us there's people there. Approximately 200 viewers a month watch from Cedar Rapids. We have a growing list of prospects, you know, family at other PLC sites that we plan to cultivate yet this fall. And we've even had a few families that have moved to Cedar Rapids in the last year, just kind of, and they're waiting for this to happen, so that's kind of exciting. And, you know, one of our things with multi-site too has been, we want to go to places where there just isn't much happening, where we can, you know, and there are some really good churches in Cedar Rapids, like there are in almost all communities in Iowa, but on this west side, it feels like we're, we could fill a need on the west side where this is located.
It's far from saturated, even with some good, strong churches there. And again, we wouldn't be going in to start from scratch, we're, there's a little, we're taking on a church that already exists, there's a congregation already there, and what they're asking for is for us to come alongside, bring our systems to help, you know, either renew or accelerate some ministry at that location. And it's subtle, but I think that's important to point out.
Okay, all right, so that's a lot of the, kind of the background and the history and kind of where it sits today. And if we didn't, you got a question we didn't answer, go ahead and submit that in the different ways that we've given you, but let me kind of move on. So, here are kind of the next steps. We're going to vote as a congregation, is it, what's the date, is it this weekend?
Do this Sunday.
Ballot's been out, do by Sunday, 5:30.
Okay, ballots have been out, and you got them on email, and for some reason, you're a member and you didn't get one, boy, let us know, PLC@PrairieLakesChurch.org, and George and his team will make sure that we get that facilitated and get that done. So, we need everybody to vote, and what we're voting on is acquiring this property by our constitution, and that means acquiring the debt with it, but we, there is always a risk, but we think it's pretty minimal from where we're at. So, we need to vote on that, so it needs to be in by this weekend, this Sunday. We'll transition Edgewood to video services, really similar to New Hampton. We're not going in with this idea of, we can't afford to, we don't have the funding right now to go, and let's bring in four staff members and let's kill it. Now, we got to come in a little slower and really build around small groups and build around some key families and kind of do it that way. So, let's talk about checkpoints. So, on the screen, we've got three checkpoints, and these aren't set in stone, so don't hold us to these, but here's what we're kind of thinking as far as, what's the timeline for this thing? Checkpoint one is this, January 1st, this January, we'll take the possession of the facility, we'll address some of the maintenance issues and try to, you know, it's an aged building, it's showing that it's not up to speed, you know, with a lot of, you know, kind of what our standards would be. So, there'll be some of that as funds are available. And checkpoint one isn't, for us, it isn't come in and we're going to have 1,000 people, it's come in and let's assess where we're at.
Get to know the neighborhood, get to know the people that are there, get to know the building, absolutely.
Yeah, serve the folks that are there, that are saying, here's the gift, we want to be a part of Prairie Lakes, and help serve them well. We want to do that. So, that's checkpoint one. Checkpoint two then, so the dominoes start to fall, and again, we don't have control over all of that, God does, and we're trusting Him. But potentially checkpoint two is in June of 2017, that's when we'll kind of stop, so this coming summer, this coming June, we'll kind of stop and evaluate the progress, and you know, what's the staffing, what we can afford here, what's the, what could it look like? What health things do we need to address, how can we continue to take that base and grow it up? So, that's checkpoint two.
Because if we sense that there is some momentum, and we need a few months to, even if it's a small staff, to search and find the right people, and if it involves just sweat equity and painting some walls and such, that's going to take, you know, a summer's a great time to do that. We learned-
That actually was one of the questions we got, was are the interior walls pink?
Oh, really, like the Hawkeye's visiting locker room?
Could be.
For a real docile environment.
Could be.
The interior walls are not pink, but we're thinking about going to real sharp orange and blue.
Orange and blue.
You're thinking about that.
Like this.
Yeah, right.
There will be some paint that needs to be applied.
Chicago Bears colors.
Yeah, yeah, ye, ye, ye.
Yeah, I think that one of the, some of the interior shots showed that the color scheme was maybe a little sort of light maroon.
Yeah.
But the shading, it could look a little pink, but again, it paints, it paints very doable.
Yeah, we can do that.
Over time, we can fix paint pretty quickly. People, yeah.
Yeah, so let's hit checkpoint three, and again, these aren't, we're not setting these in stone, but this is what we'd shoot for. Checkpoint three is really then by August, you know, it'll be kind of another spot for us to go, okay, can we expand some ministry and programming based on momentum and resources? Again, that's just a spot where we stop and go, okay, where are we at? What kind of groups do we have? What kind of momentum do we have? What's happening? And, you know, it could be going like this, or it could be real flat, we don't know what God wants to do.
So, okay, so we've gone through the checkpoints, you know, and I think what we're saying is we're going to let momentum drive our programming and our staffing model rather than the other way around. One of the questions that we got is asking for probably a little bit more specificity, right? So, the question is, who will lead in Cedar Rapids to get started? Volunteer, current staff, or members there? How do we kind of envision that? Are we able to answer that question right now, or how do we answer that?
I think it's a mix. I think we don't have currently staff that we have hired for, we haven't even voted on this. So, some of that gets determined after we see how the vote plays out on Sunday. But what we do have is a very capable ministry resident, Chris Bowden. And this would be, there's margin in his residency to play a part-time role, two days a week in Cedar Rapids, and so we're thinking, absolutely, that's a great option. We have lay leaders who have stepped up and said, hey, you know, if we can help bridge that gap, count us in. We can't go down every day, but we could make a commitment of a day a week or two a week to help. And, you know, we do have a congregation there that I think may be ready to be challenged in some new ways, and everybody wins if people in Cedar Rapids at Edgewood really embrace this thing and want to carry it forward. I think that's more than enough to create some good momentum, January, February, March, and as we see, you know, what evolves, it's pretty easy for us to add to that.
Yeah, and we've got our seminary program that's going, that we have people that are training for what could be their next step in a year or two. We've got chaplains that are entering that next season of life where they're ready to say, I can commit to this for a day or two and be a pastoral presence, so not sure what it's going to look like, but there's some options. So, that's a great question.
Our rhythm too is that we make visits on Sundays, and that congregation becomes just a part of our rhythm too. So, you know, I think we can support this in a healthy, sustainable way, easily for the next six months. And that buys us enough time.
Yeah, very good. So, I mean, really, that's kind of what we know right now, and, you know, again, the questions about money, yep, we're fully aware of that, and we're cautious, but we also want to be filled with faith. And then the question of, a little bit of that strategy question of, well, I thought we were going to go into towns that were maybe smaller and have something, and we've kind of answered that. In fact, you and I talked about that today, you had a great scenario that you kind of painted, and run us through that, that we went, we kind of got to Osage, we thought, ooh, wow, this is pretty small, and it's-
Doable, but it was, it's been a challenge. And so, learning from Osage, I think we launched Grinnell, and we said, oh, we may need, for our particular model at that point, we need to target some larger communities. So, Grinnell and Fort Dodge, we funded that out of the ABS, and the picture driving our ABS were larger communities. Now, New Hampton was kind of deviated from that, but, you know, that was one that God brought to us. The group in New Hampton came knocking on our door, we didn't go out to, and that has been a very different model. We started that with a group of volunteers, and they held that together for close to a year before we added a very part-time staff member, and that lasted for another season before we brought on Pastor Corey. So, that has grown very nicely, but gradually, and-
In a very different model.
More modestly, it's a very different model than Fort Dodge. But what we've learned is that, you know, we think that there are, in a place like Cedar Rapids, you know, a lot of resources that we can draw from, and, you know, maybe that becomes a feeder someday, potentially, for some smaller towns around, you know, maybe particularly on the west of Cedar Rapids, between Cedar Rapids and Grinnell, for example.
Sure, sure, that's good.
Kind of using my imagination there, but there may be some possibilities.
Couple other questions kind of have come in. One, so praise and worship in Cedar Rapids is going to be done by video from Cedar Falls, is that kind of the plan to begin?
Yeah, initially, yeah.
Worth a conversation, but we know that that is something that we use in New Hampton. We know the quality is good, we know that it's consistent, we know that it works, and that it's engaging in terms of how we produce that. It will connect with people in a room, on a screen, even in a place like Cedar Rapids. It's not new technology, it's not experimental anymore, we just, we know that it works.
So, we're being called a little bit on the carpet about our insider language.
I've never got to do that.
ABS, does that mean-
I got it.
Intellect Brake System? Do we fund it out of our-
Yes, we have an intellect brake system that we patented, that we get a lot of rope.
What is ABS?
ABS is a campaign that we did, George, for 2011, that said, listen, we did a campaign that said, let's write a better story. So, ABS, a better story, let's write a better story across Iowa.
That was the name of the campaign.
Yeah, and so, we raised 300-
3.1, 3.1 million?
3.1 million at that time of above and beyond giving, that was really the launch for all these, this multi-site start. So, we were about to launch three campuses basically out of that, right?
The goal was two, and we actually had surplus because Grinnell got better camps, so that's helping out there.
Yeah, so the goal was two, we went to three. So, that was, and there's other things in that three, one, but yeah, it was a really successful campaign that we were excited about. And think of it, look what God has done with your generosity. I mean, people are saved, people are going to heaven because of the generosity and the mission, and man, that's why we do this, man, that's why we do this, okay?
Another question, it's kind of related, but how many pastors do we have on staff right now at Prairie Lakes?
Across all campuses, probably.
Yeah, let's assume that.
So, let's, we have, you know, we have ministry leaders, we have staff people, we have pastors, right? And we're pretty, we're pretty tight with how we use the word pastor, would we all agree with that? In fact, we have kind of a, what's our, the elders kind of make a, what was our kind of criteria? They have to be called, the position is a pastoral position, they're called to a pastoral position. So, it's not necessarily they've been to seminary or have their MDiv or ordained at this point, it's called to. So, the three of us are pastors. Chip, Pastor Chip at CF is a pastor, Pastor Shane at CF is a pastor, John Church, who's now more central services discipleship, is a pastor.
Pastor Eric.
Pastor Eric Duncan, our college, The River, the college ministry pastor. So, that's where we at, eight?
Seven.
Seven. Then we go to our campuses from there, right? So, then we'd have-
This is like a good test.
This is a test, I got it.
I'm kind of excited to see how this is going to work out.
Let's do this. So, let's go up to Osage, we have Pastor Andy Schumaker in Osage, we have Pastor Corey in New Hampton, we have Pastor Phil and Pastor Jonathan in Grinnell, Pastor Kyle in Fort Dodge, and that's, that's 12, so 12 pastors.
And the one pastor that we forgot, we sincerely apologize if there was one.
Yeah.
Let's just assume there was.
We did not.
Let's assume there's one or two out there that we're grateful for you.
These are our boys, man, we got them, we're together.
Oh, man, okay.
That's a good question.
Those are the questions that have kind of come in so far. Oh, we got, we got one more that just kind of came in. So, this is a question about consultants that we just used.
Unstuck Group.
Unstuck Group, to help us kind of discern what our next steps are. And so, the question is, has the unstuck work shown growth at the current campuses? Is the vision focused on multi-site growth or building upon current congregations? So, let's just kind of assume, like, are we trying to expand or are we trying to develop current campuses? I think it's probably what's-
That's great, that's a tension they helped us identify right away. Yeah, because for the last several years, our growth has been kind of by adding campuses. And we, and none of us are comfortable with that, and that's, we were feeling a little stuck and some tension over that, and so we, yeah. So, I think early signs are that, like, we're seeing some momentum at our sites, two of them have launched second services, which we're kind of in the works. Definitely, we're seeing growth there, but also the, our efforts towards assimilation and really getting serious about new folks that are coming in the doors and doing a better job of connecting with our folks that have been around and faithful for a long time, and they, we had to look in the mirror and realize, wow, we, as we've been focused on multi-site the last few years, we've abandoned some of our discipleship efforts.
That was a big learning.
Some lessons.
Big, big learning, yeah, let me deviate just a little bit, let me sum that for a minute. This is a tension of, you know, where are we growing, where are we not growing, and how is, are we worried more about growing than we are about, you know, growing up our current, yeah, that's a tension, and we, it is, and in both, absolutely. We want to reach as many lost people as we can, and that is, that, come on, come on, all of us, we all want that. And the way that we're going to do that is really not by launching campuses, that's going to be a catalyst for it, but the way we're really going to reach lost people is when we launch disciples. So, when we grow up our Prairie Lakers to be increasingly obeying and loving Jesus, what we've been talking about now for months, and you, you Prairie Laker, growing, taking steps, what we did this weekend with your little Iowa, I mean, that's how we're going to, we're going, we're growing you up so you can grow up people who aren't there yet.
Yeah, I mean, we've used consultants, well, a handful of times in the last probably 10 years, and it's just, it's been so valuable for us, almost every single, really every single time. And so, one of the things that unstuck, and this was kind of, you know, as we sat in these meetings, that they really, it was so insightful, was it really does seem like as we have gone from a one-campus church to six, now five, soon maybe back to six, is what they said was, boy, you really cannibalized some of your developmental systems so that you could expand. And what they meant by, we had, when we were one campus, we had pretty large groups, discipleship, and a lot of those people and teams ended up becoming central services or campus staff to support expansion, and then we expanded pretty fast. I mean, we did six campuses, we did five extra campuses besides Cedar Falls in five years. And kind of what they, what they started to see, and as we were able to step back with, from it with their help, was, wow, we probably explored the very limits, if not just even a little bit beyond, what we could probably expand in terms of- what we could probably expand in terms of what we can support. And so they were really quick to kind of identify that. And there were some of the changes that we made out of that process, even in the last probably two or three months, has been a reinvestment in some of those developmental systems like discipleship, like connection, and even some kind of restructuring and roles right now. And, and what we've seen, even the, even the, um, early returns of that, cause, cause you gotta remember, some of these changes, we're not gonna really feel the full effect of until six, twelve, eighteen months down the road. But what we've seen even in a little bit, as we've invested in some of those more developmental growth, growing up discipleship, growing people up, connecting people type of strategies, even in just a purely budgetary sense, has been so encouraging, you know? And we're starting to, um, even feel a different tenor at our campuses, um, as we've made that investment. And I think we've got more, a lot more work to do on that. But it's such a, that was a very insightful question. Whoever did that.
Yeah, good job.
Way to go. Um, next question, uh, what amount of debt will PLC take on with this?
That's, yeah, great question. The, the exact amount, George, is about two forty.
About two forty, a little under.
Little under two, two hundred and forty. So that, it's about a thirteen hundred dollar a month payment. Their, their congregation right now is about a hundred thousand dollar budget. And, and they soon won't be paying a staff member. And, and so we.
We're hopeful.
We're hopeful that, that can just kind of, we can just keep going there. That, that won't be a, um.
Revenue neutral type.
Yeah, hopefully.
One of the questions that came in ahead of time, uh, there is a balloon payment that's due in January of two thousand and eighteen. So how would we address that? Um, we have, uh, a loan with US Bank and, uh, we would fold it into that, uh, actually have a little savings on the interest. Um, but then, you know, we would hope that that congregation continues to give faithfully and, uh, at least at a level to, to keep paying off that, that debt. Um, that's.
Yeah.
We have thought about that. We've got a plan, very comfortable with the plan. And, uh, that's how we deal with it this year and next year.
And let me kind of just jump on the, the two things that we just kind of talked about. The, one was the growth thing. And, and hey, there's, there's, listen, we, there's some, there's some tension there in, in, inside of us, right? Our, our, Cedar Falls has been flat. And boy, I, I hate that. You hate that. Um, there's different reasons for it, some good, some not so good, but.
Probably the preaching.
It's mostly me.
Yeah.
Certain of it. Yeah, it's mostly me. And, uh.
Sorry, man. That's very unprofessional of me.
You're my brother.
Yeah, still?
Yeah, when I'm not there.
No, 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 no. People love me.
Chip, we had to get Chip here too.
Chip is great.
I'm the only one that can ask that question.
So, so yeah, that to me, I mean, I, uh, that, that bothers me. And, and I've been here for, uh, what did we decide? How long?
Ninety-eight.
Kane, I since ninety-eight, uh, somebody do the math, George, math.
Eighteen.
Eighteen years. So Kane, I've been here eighteen years. And in my eighteen years, um, we've, we've always finished ahead. They're in the black, not, not behind. And even though we're, we're behind budget, behind giving, we're still okay as far as expenses and, and income. So I, I like that. So I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm appealing to all of us saying, hey, listen, we got a mission and, and our generosity will make a difference. What God has given us. So I'm appealing to everybody. Just, man, be a tithe and be above and beyond her. And what else do you want to be involved in? I mean, there is nothing more exciting than this, uh, that we get to do. I mean, nothing.
Yeah, good.
That's good. Uh, I think it looks like we've kind of covered most of the questions that have come in.
Well, as, as much as I'd like to just to fill a bunch of airtime with some jokes and some, some, uh, some really, some, some fun and snarky banter. We're not gonna do that, but we want to say thank you for, for joining in. Again, you can always submit questions. Um, you can do it always on the, on the website. There's always the submit a question form. Um, you can always submit a question, email at plc@praillicerch.org. Um, you can always grab one of us. And honestly, with, with, with George, uh, uh, with, with George, uh, Wessel, man, he is, he is sharp. He enjoys, just do a great job with our finances